...allocated over 3,962 acres less, this is the key, less rights of way, other rights of way, comma, Gateway Service District Waterways, comma, Conservation Areas, comma, Flowways and other similar facilities, and they go on and on and on. My interpretation of that is that Flowways, Conservation Areas and Wetlands are not a assessment item. It should be based on the raw land. My motion is that we correct what we're building. Good example, the Club at Gateway is built for 223.8 acres. Of that, 51.1 acres is water. Pelican Reserve is built for 397, 398.4, 156 acres are wetlands and ponds and flowways. My deal is a motion to immediately correct, and this is not an increase, this would be a decrease, change our assessment for this year to reduce the amount of the assessment to the two golf courses on the basis of what is fair, reasonable and equitable to one per acre of land, not counting Flowways, Wetlands and ponds.
Point of order about both of those.
Number one, this item is not germane to the fiscal '19 budget directly. Number two, it hasn't been put on our agenda. And number three, the board has engaged a professional firm to look at the way these items are assessed. And number four, doing this at the last minute without any written confirmation from our professional is totally out of order, and I request that you not allow the motion.
I totally disagree with all that. This is the time you bring these things up, and it is proper for the motion. And in fact, if you didn't like this one, you're really not going to like the next one when you find out what's going on in this community and what I have discovered. You're not going to like it at all. But I keep my motion as stands that the two golf courses assessment for this year should be reduced from the figure and the calculation they're paying at that is inclusive of ponds, flowways and wetlands to their pure raw land.
Tony, this isn't the type of thing that we can take care of this evening, is my understanding.
The board has the ability to have the good objective evidence and recommendation as to application of the assessment methodology to modify an allocation downward of EAUs. And based upon a number of conversations this week with Mr. Tinkell, Chris, Stephen Blum and Russ Wire. And Stephen, I'm not the assessment methodology guy, but my understanding is that you and Russ are both comfortable with maintaining the golf course EAU allocations as they exist based upon the assessment methodology for Gateway and your practices with other CDDs, that the lakes and waterways are not backed out of the acreage calculation until such time as they are deeded to the CDD. Is that correct or not?
Correct. So I can say a couple of things on the topic. One is-
The board has the priority to vote down.
Yeah. The board has the ability to do that. And having these discussions and looking at the methodology, it is a gray area in terms of what it's supposed to be. Because it does say that public right of ways, you know, all that good stuff that Mr. Tinkell mentioned are not supposed to be assessed. But it does not address that if a golf course owns this lake themselves, whether or not it should be assessed. It just says one acre.
Stephen, did you see a comment in there that says golf courses excluded?
It doesn't comment one way or the other.
Doesn't say.
Now, from what I've seen and kind of going back and trying to research this and go back and forth, a lot of times what I was seeing, even going and listening to a meeting from 2008 yesterday, the wording that they used was gross acres. So again, that's really all I can comment in terms of how the logic of it is, was gross acres, and that's how it's been done since then. If you want to make a case that it should be net, I mean, that's certainly well within the board's rights. Normally, it's gross unless it specifically says net assessable acres. That's how I've seen it. But it doesn't mean it has to be that way 100 percent.
And we have engaged someone to do an assessment methodology.
And we did, you know-
He's not addressing that issue. He's not addressing that issue.
Wait, is that something we can add to his scope?
I think that would be appropriate.
He could do that.
Part of our conversation was also when we did the Lake Bank Restoration Project, recall, part of the analysis then was finding issues with the allocation of EAUs for various properties at that time. And that was, a year ago that was performed. And there were a number of properties where we said there might be too many EAUs, others were not enough, or EDP consists on the application. So we went through that exercise, and I think that same allocation of EAUs that was used for Lake Bank Restoration as to Gateway proper-
Yes.
-was used for this prepared assessment role.
Keep in mind, when we did that before, there hadn't been a sale, that we created a survey that identified 223.8 versus on the set of it. So it's new information that we've come up with that has identified this as a problem. I think it's totally the members of both those clubs are being double dipped and paying for stuff that I believe is unreasonable.
Well, my position on it is, I don't doubt your research or your numbers, but I think the prudent thing to do is, one, we have a vendor consultant that's doing some of this work. I think we should expand the scope to include this and give it time to, you know, fully mature the research head and get a couple of other sets of eyes on it. I think it would be our due diligence to basically spend a little more time and focus on that. This change is part of the next year when we've got true facts, because I think there's some other things that we've looked at too around allocations of fund and other things that we need to dive into. I'm just, I'm uncomfortable doing it tonight because I just don't have enough information to have been validated by a professional.
Just give everybody the ideal rule or the order of magnitude of what we're talking about. Pelican Reserve Golf Club, in my opinion, is being able to build this year by $190,000. And Gateway Golf and Country Club, the Club at Gateway, is being able to build by about $32,000. I think it's wrong, I think it's flat wrong, and that's why I made the motion.
So we have a motion on the table. Let me get a second. I'll second the discussion here. Okay? All right. Okay? I want to know why we can't wait till next year, why we can't put, as Mr. Banks said, to have the 100.
You have to leave the reason why you can't, because you can't recover it. You can't recover it. It's assessed this year, you can't recover it.
But, you know, it was, you know, again, this wasn't brought up all during the whole budget. And I'm more concerned is that maybe when they find out and they do the assessment, the methodology, that it might not be exactly as you said. And it might, you know, we could be off a little bit.
We may have changed policy too.
Right. And that we would have exactly what it is, the exact amount. And that way, we would have, you know, and what we have is what you-
It should be in the agenda.
Right. And what we have is what you state, and I'm not saying it's wrong, but we should have some for the staff really come back with the exact data, so we have exact data.
Kathleen, that's admirable. That's the same thing the boards have done for 22 years. Kick the can down the road.
Any other questions? No, that was it. We have a motion on the floor, so I will call the board, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No, aye.
I vote aye because I voted, I second the vote.
You can vote against it. You can vote against the motion you made.
So it's one in favor and four against.
In one second, Margaret, just to go back to the last motion, I want to make sure that everyone was clear that what we didn't pass was pulling money out of the reserves to cover the sewer clean. We already have it in the budget. I just want to make sure that there wasn't any misunderstanding that we pulled that money out altogether or that we're not doing at least a portion of that cleaning for next year. There was some oohs and ahs, and I don't know if that was because we didn't pull out of reserves, or if it was just because people thought that maybe we pulled that money out altogether.
The residents are going to pay more, more than what they had in their reserve.
My point of clarity is to make sure they understood that the money stayed in the budget. We're doing the work, we're just not pulling out of the reserve.
But let's use the money that we've already got.
What I can answer is that with regards to Russ Wire's task and his assessment methodology, you know, if there was any question that his scope would not include or would include the discussion that we just had with regards to, again, double checking the allocation, I think it's important for a subsequent board action in the next meeting to make sure it's part of the task, like Mr. Banks said. Because this is an issue that, there are a number of facts out there on both sides of the fence and some applications in going to new methodology, might as well look at the allocation at the same time.
I agree.
And so I think that was actually a suggestion, Mr. Banks, and that's part of it.
Let's have the agenda.
It has to be sooner rather than later.
I just want to make sure one thing's on the record and clear. Stephen, is the money that by failing to approve this, which is to the tune of $225,000 to two entities in this community, is a recoverable?
When you say recoverable, from their perspective or from the district's perspective?
Their perspective.
Oh, no, there wouldn't be just an automatic guarantee refund if that's what you're referring to. There'd just be assessed-
Having Russ do this work.
But as a matter of law, if a party wishes to challenge and object to the budget, the allocation, the assessments, they have the ability to do that. They can appear him tonight and/or some other mechanism. They have that ability.
I'll go on, I got my point clear. The last item I have, I don't think we can do anything about it, but I think the board needs to be aware of the seriousness of what I've been talking about. We have 14, sorry, 12 straps in this community and in Pelican Reserve that have not been paying for I don't know how many years the correct assessment. We can't make a motion, or I can't make a motion because I've been told we do not have time to be able to get it into the newspaper and meet the county's requirement of September 15th. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I want to make sure everybody understands though, what we have been doing in the past year. Because it's a debt in my vision. We have seven straps. The strap is a piece of rock.
Mr. Tinkell, if I may, I printed out what Stephen had prepared in large format.
Mine?
No, this format here, which may match what you have, but I think this would be helpful for the board to have during the discussion if you reference any strap numbers.
I wouldn't go into that detail because this, I can't make a motion because it can't be done.
Right, but I understand, as opposed to trying to listen to it, it's difficult to listen.
Yeah, made in large, not to your eyes necessarily, but for my own.
I want to make sure the residents of this community understand what's going on and what has been going on here. We have a ordinance or a assessment area methodology that requires commercial properties to pay 5.8 times the going residential rate, okay, times the acreage or fraction thereof. Somehow, some way, we have seven resident or commercial straps over at the entrance to Pelican Reserve that have been paying the acreage times 5.8. But instead of paying the Pelican Reserve residential rate of 1051.78, they've been discounted to $390.21 and for I don't know how many years. For this year's budget, they will pay $79,435 for those seven lots assessments. They should be paying by our rules. And I mean, there isn't a question about this. This is factual. They should be paying $214,132 to the residents of Pelican Reserve. Bill, this impacts you and I mean. This goes to your budget over there. This is money that could be reduced to reduce the amount of money that the residents of Pelican Reserve have to come up with. In addition to that, where this came from, I have no idea. When you start uncovering things in Gateway, be prepared, be prepared. There are nine straps identified as golf course items in Pelican Reserve. And golf course items dip one per acre, which we had that little discussion a while ago, whether it's one including water or one not including water. The WCI Town Center, the WCI Sales Center, that totaled 22 and 1.86 acres, and the WCI RV and Boat Storage property are paying one per acre. They certainly aren't residential. A golf course is more than a mile away from them. They should be rated as commercial at 5.8. This year, they're going to pay $31,000, and they being WCI, well, they should be paying This is ridiculous. Here in Gateway, to get it a little closer to home, we've got the Girl Scout Building, 1.60 acres, 9.28 when you multiply it times the 5.8. Trouble is, we aren't assessing them at the 5.8. They're getting away with the equal acreage, just like a residence. They're paying 965, 46 this year, they should be paying $5,594.64 as a commercial property. I cannot do anything about this at this time simply because of the fact we ran out of time. But this is what's been going on in this community. Nobody's watching the hen house.
So this should be part of the assessment methodology also.
You're going to try and obviously give that, but yes, that's been part of our discussions, and for two points for clarification, the timing issue is because to increase allocation of dollar amounts for EAUs to a parcel, we'd have to do a new map and tables and mail notice in the-
Probably.
Right, and the assessment laws have to be, the tax of the property priser by September 15th and preferably by September 1st so they can do their split outs. And that just doesn't work, as Mr. Tinkell mentioned. Secondly, for clarification on the assessment methodology as to the commercial, and the second assessment area as to the commercial that's planted or improved or developed, that is the 5.8. But the factors to be applied, that factors to be applied when it's planted, subdivided or not planted or subdivided when developed. So the argument is that when it's vacant commercial, it's one year, one EAU, but when it's developed, and so the argument would be, I guess, as to the storage facility that's developed, as to the Town Center that's developed. So that's part of what we would also ask to be part of Russ Wire's task when we do the assessment methodology, so that if we do need to increase the amount of units allocated to it appropriately, that would be part of the methodology.
And I want to make sure that one other thing is clear for the record. We cannot do any amendment to the budget because of this time restraint. There is no way we can do any amendment to the budget whatsoever that would circumvent the time deal of September 15th.
You cannot increase the assessment amount that a parcel will have to pay above what you noticed.
Or increase the EAU allocation.
Increase that would also result in it.
Guys, that's my question. If we give them notes, can we do it after September 15th as an amendment?
No.
So as I said in our meeting the other day, and I'm just going to make this clear for everybody, it's ali-ali-ol and free to the tune of more than a quarter of a million dollars here. That's not fair, not reasonable at all.
That'll be brought out and vetted by the assessment.
It'll be vetted, Margaret, but the problem is, it's not recoverable.
Well, here's one aspect, I'm trying to modify that. If you want to collect off-roll and bill them directly, you have to go back to the assessment hearing process.
Special defensive assessment.
No, it'd be if you want to do that. Now, what we're talking about is on-roll. Your assessments are collected on-roll, and that guarantees payment, you don't worry about sending out done letters and foreclosures. You always have, you have the option of collecting what's called off-roll, a direct billing, pay the next number of days, you don't pay, we initiate foreclosure action. The, you can do that process, but again, the time you hit the send notices out, do the advertising, do everything else, and the property will come in and argue yes or no why they believe it's appropriate at that time. And if you maintain it, then you can direct bill, and that would be a bill that would come out, what, September, November, December?
Yeah.
January. But that would be a direct billing, not show financial, assuming forsaken discussion.
This is the follow, yeah, this isn't to follow the uniform collection-
Correct.
...policy.
To get the same result.
You can do that anytime.
You want to do a direct bill yourself, then that's different.
But again, if it's not paid, then you have to go through foreclosure, it's more comfortable.
I'm not ready to go that route.
Did you have any doubts?
I want to clarify that for that person.
That's all I have.
Mr. Banks?
No. This is the kind of item that, you know, where we've had lack of, you know, internal auditing and oversight in the past. Chris, this is, I don't know how we would have caught this other than, you know, and digging through it, but it seems like, how long did it take you to kind of uncover this once you looked at the numbers?
I suspected it about 10 years ago, but I never was in a position to get access to the documents that I've had in the last two years to check it out. It just doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense at all. I mean, our rules are clear. Commercial pay, I pay, and they pay the rate of the residential. How somebody came up and arbitrarily got to this board, I'm sorry, this board, prior boards, and this goes way back.
Run by the developer.
I'm sorry.
Run by the developer.
And the management company should have been.
The management company should have.
Well, and this is where, again, I think over the last two years, what we've tried to push is oversight, accountability, updating our policies, procedures, because they hadn't been touched for years. To Ed's point, he said it multiple times, issues have been kicked down the road, but this just goes to the severity of, we've got to turn over every rock. We've got to make sure we've got the right staff in place that's checking our numbers. The assessment methodology is going to be a huge piece for us, it's going to give us, you know, things that we haven't had before. So my only comment is, this is just another example of, you know, we have to continuously push staff and our vendors to double check everything and make sure that we're just correcting end to end.
Did you have anything for the budget?
No, I don't.
Mr. Banks?
I was just going to make that comment. We knew that last year when we started having these discussions about the assessment methodology that hadn't been addressed in 25 years, no one's taken a close look at it. We hired Russ and uncovered some problems, we're aware of it, need to be fixed. We'll take that scope and get it adjusted with Russ. Of course, in the big picture, you have 9,294 EAUs, and we're talking 14 strap numbers. I mean, it's bad, it's a significant issue that needs to be addressed, but we are addressing it.
Well, and I'll just make a little less comment. I say that because I think what we've done over the last two years, and you and staff just with preventative maintenance and making sure policy and procedures are up to speed, make those things that had significant impact to, I think, where we're at today versus what we were 3, 5, 10 years ago. So we're moving in the right direction. But this is just an example of, there's still a lot more to do.
Are you ready for a motion to adopt a specific year of '19 budget amendment?
It can be in five minutes. Do you have anything, any changes to the budget? Because I know that Mrs. Flair has-
Oh, I'm sorry. She skipped over you a few, a minute ago, I thought you were-
I want to go back to Mr. Tinkell's motion about the 310. My concern was that, and it still is, you want to take that out of the reserve, however, you want to get a loan to pay for it.
No, 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 no. I want to take the 310 to cover the 350 that we put in the budget to lower the rates of the residents. Going forward, I'm hoping that we can get an SRF loan and finance that other $2 million over the next 20 years.
But that still will be paid for by the residents, rather than if we keep-
But it's not paid by cash.
Yeah. Well, if we kept the 350 in this year and again next year, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change what I'm saying, how much the residents have to pay, and they wouldn't have to pay back a loan, which has an interest. And that was, that's my concern.
Well, that's fine, but which one of these residents out here in the audience and their communities, do you want to tell them they're going to wait seven years to get their sewers cleaned, to bridge your weight?
I don't think it'll take that long.
Well, $2 million divided by 350, I think the way I do it, it's about six and two-thirds years.
But we haven't said that's what-
That's the reason you debt finance this.
So you can do it now.
So that you could do it now, and everybody gets the benefit and everybody shares in the cost. Otherwise, we get in the position of going through, like we discussed. We've got the problem facing us at the next meeting. The 350 that we've approved, Jeff, that's in the budget. Who's going to slice the baby?
So what if-
Who gets their sewers cleaned and who doesn't?
I'm just going to say this, we've already been for this, we did not vote in favor of it. Do you have any other changes to the budget?
No, I don't. I just was trying to get some-
Thanks for the question.
I wanted some clarification.
I understand, I do. I just want to try and get us back to the budget. I have one item that I would like to discuss, and that was because we did get two scopes of work for the pool. And I just want to make sure, this is not going to change assessments, this doesn't raise anything, this is going to the capital improvement plan on the general fund, and I just want to make sure that the pool, the swimming pool rehab and improvements carry over or is included in the fiscal year 2019 because the pool rehab has to be done. We've got some safety issues over there with resident items. And I want, my motion is to put the 110, the 10 and 20 into the fiscal year 2019 so the funding is still available to take care of the needs over there at the pool that need to be freed up.
So we have got an identification, this is in the bid, it's an estimate.
Right.
We've got an identification that that $140,000 is what it's going to cost to put in restrooms at the pool, new furniture and a storage building for $140,000?
I will let you decide.
I mean, we're-
Will you address that, Michael?
Who prepared a spec for this, because I'll tell you, you build a house for that price.
You can build a new pool.
You can't, you can't build a new-
It needs a lot of work. That shed and furniture, that's carried over from last year, that's this fiscal year we're now, that's not going over into next year. We just have those estimates to do the stuff that needs to be done. It's all mostly safety wise, it's running, making the bathrooms, things like that, it's all stuff that, I mean, and you can walk over there and take a look, I mean, it's in need of some help. So we were trying, you know, I believe staff had a hard time getting it done this year because of the hurricanes, couldn't even get a contractor to come out until the past couple weeks, and it's just with timing, it's probably going to carry over into next year.
But my question, Mike, is that this consolidation that Margaret wants to do, it's $140,000, which is in our current capital improvement general fund. Correct. If I'm looking at this tablet right, the total's 184. Am I missing something?
Yeah, no, it's the, I think is what she's talking about, is the 110 and the 50 that we had this year, this past year. Some of them have been removed, those other ones have stayed in, but they're in that 18 column. The number that we had budgeted this past year was 110 and 50. And that's just, that's the pool rehab and the other bathroom rehab at the pool, there's $2 billion, there's no storage unit, no furniture.
Did we prepare a spec and put this out for bids from several deals or just this one deal for a specific purpose?
Yeah, it's just been those two that have come in.
We don't have to vote on this tonight.
No, I just, the only thing I'm voting on is to make sure that the money is available in this, I want to make sure that that 110, the 10 and 20 is in the fiscal year 19 capital improvement general fund.
We have 140 preserved in the current deal as it says, right now.
We're not showing it, but we're not showing it.
No, there's nothing in 19.
There's nothing in 19.
You removed it last meeting.
It's in 18. But in the 2018, there's 140, none of that's been spent, correct?
Correct.
Are you just saying to move the 140 to 19?
Yes.
Yes, that's my motion.
It'll automatically move to-
That's what I was going to say.
At the end of the year, when the balance comes in.
It won't actually be in those line items.
It'd be better to have it in the budget, it'd be better to have it in the CIP. Technically, it'll roll over to the balance, but that way, it's budgeted in total CIP.
Did we prepare a spec for this to be able to get OAK and the other company to give us a quote? Or did they just go in there and do a wish list?
We made a list of all the things that needed to be done, had to go up, walk through and inspect.
So they had a spec?
And these just came in. I was trying to get them to you guys so you could discuss it tonight, but I know that one is significantly more, I think it's almost double, but I know briefly, just staff members said that they're doing a lot more work. So I don't know how far you've read through them, exactly where it is, but just to show numbers to justify that balance that we talked about last week.
But when it, I'll say, I hate to say it, but I'll say it, $140,000 when I got sewers that need to be cleaned, I tell you, this ain't my priority, I can tell you that.
I understand that, but we have, we've got infrastructure that we're responsible for, that we need to maintain.
It's called storm sewers.
And I agree with you, Ed, and I, so I have made the motion, please move this from the twenty-eighteen capital improvement budget into the twenty-nineteen. Do I have a second?
Second for discussion, because I have a question.
Okay, thanks.
All right, all right. In this, in these biddings, is painting services, okay? I don't understand why, but we had somebody in staff that couldn't paint the buildings. That was when I was talking about maintenance, they, we wouldn't have to pay for the labor. So my question, that's one of my questions.
One of the things is, we're not approving either one of these bids, we're just making sure, we're just making sure that the money is available to do what in the twenty-nineteen budget.
And will that increase on?
No, this does not increase the assessment.
Like Bill said, if you don't spend it in eighteen, it'll roll over anyway.
It's going to roll over, okay.
But it isn't going to roll over to those specific line items, and I think this is something that staff and the community emerge to have.
So, okay, so what we're doing is just rolling it over to the exact line items, but it's just going to roll over anyways, but.
Yet to be determined first.
Yeah, and I have no problem with rolling the money over, but I still think we need to look at this, I'm not comfortable spending at the points that we have right now.
And they aren't going to continue to get.
Yeah, no, I understand that, that's, I'm fine with the motion.
I just don't, I just don't want it to be overlooked, and then we say, we don't have any money in the budget to do any repairs at the pool, that's my fear.
I'm sure most of the repairs that we're looking at are safety-related, uneven tile, rusted doorways where someone could snag and get cut and hurt, unequal up ledges on the tiling, and of course, things are just getting dilapidated for not being painted, but our concern is the safety of the water.
So thank you for seconding it, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
Aye.
So three to two. Thank you. And now, Mr. Guy, I'm going to entertain your motion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move that we adopt the fiscal year nineteen budget as amended.
Mr. Guy, it's hard that that's to adopt Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash six, adopting the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget as amended.
What's that?
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second. Yes, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Question first?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Does that include the total enterprise fund for all those years in the stage?
No, no, just for clarity purposes, you were only adopting fiscal year two thousand and nineteen C I P plan for both the general fund and the enterprise fund.
And the only change that we made here tonight, that was agreed to, was adding the hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars to the oh-one account.
Sliding it one year.
Nothing else was.
So the assessments were up by a hundred-and-twenty.
So did that impact?
No. We're funding it through reserves.
I want to make sure I heard him say that.
It's funded through reserves.
I would like to hear you all, before you pass the budget, give us a summary of what the changes were. You did it an hour ago.
Yeah, I think the only change, the only change is we added one-twenty in, and we took one-twenty in reserves to pay for it. The three-ten that I made in motion that didn't go through to lower it even more to offset the three-fifty, failed.
So it's a wash.
It's a wash, yes, sir.
That's all along the hearing.
So.
Thank you, Bill.
Again, we have a motion on the table to accept the budget as amended, that's Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash six, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Now we have one more motion, I believe.
Madam Chairman, may I?
No, 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 you do the honors.
Madam Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution two oh-one eight dash seven, imposing the special assessments and certified an assessment role in conjunction with the amended budget that we just adopted.
I'll second.
Motion is a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
We are not opposed.
So we have one opposed, four in favor, one opposed.